I'm a good year. She was in the.
Well, I think this is like her.
He said it's in the.
Like just by.
Second day and it was so disappeared to us.
It's been.
I am. You guys.
Yeah.
They did.
They probably.
But she. No.
The Trump. Oh, our uh. He was. But uh here's from the.
Exactly.
So people. So maybe. Sorry, what did that?
Sure. I. You feel.
Look at. Yeah. Yeah, the last name.
Yeah.
Do you?
Super. Yeah. That's. You're. So that is an array of questions. Him or. I will. I'm so.
Texter.
I can say right now. I know there's.
How did it go?
And if you. Wasn't the process. I know that we get guys, they say he had.
Between.
We're just getting.
Yeah.
I'm just studying.
Yeah.
We're.
Not.
We're. For sure.
Okay. I'm sure it's.
Is much, was much better.
Now. Definitely.
Notice a rule. Something in the elevator, but it could be. Yeah. I don't know.
That's why I went. Still.
It was great. Never lie. Is it Friday?
Yeah.
The user.
I'm going to shake my words.
Is there any other things who we should be looking at? Make us watch. Before it goes. Oh, yeah. Okay. Before we get ourselves in any trouble.
All right.
All right. I have.
Big sprout.
I love you guys.
I think it was all. Hello.
Well.
I read.
Probably. Six inch.
Good afternoon.
One of the metal.
I read.
She are. I'm just. At least. That's dangerous. To start your ass.
It does. This first. Probably. Start.
You learn a lot. So. Yes, sir.
He's like. He's gonna need. Charge.
It's very work. It's right. So we.
Yeah, the man. They. She wants something to stop it. There's something something on the. Can they? It's gonna be, it'll be lower than. They need. So. So.
Uh. I think. The one we got. What's that?
They're locked. Nobody's variable. There's.
It's not like. No, don't be happy about it. You go to the. I said, please. I said, I have. I'm scared. So. You're. Alex.
Wait, and that's, that's comes up. Yeah, but. That's awesome.
Okay, now. So. But we're just getting. Yeah. There's color. Yeah, that's.
Good, Chrissy.
That's too bad.
Wow.
Okay, welcome everyone. We're gonna start the meeting. Is it Madler?
Please. Lisa and Nancy Flair, clerk. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Sir, you guys.
Here. Okay. Agenda item one is dispense the reading in the minutes of the workshop. And the regular meeting. Uh, two approved bills. Three, transfer monies submitted by the auditor as listed. Any? No questions. One, approve additional appropriations. By the auditor is listed. Five, do approve additional. Uh, but you have a done one, number four. Commissioners on there twice. Why?
We can explain that. It had to do on the commissioners and why is there?
It's their auditor's office. It's on here twice, one for Fund nine forty-nine, which is the fund that is transferring the money to. It has to be an expense out of that fund. And then we also increased it in O O one because that's the fund that you're going to be spending the money out of ultimately.
But we just want to do it at number five on transfer appropriations?
It's not a transfer appropriation because it's two separate funds. It starts out as a trans. The first part is that transferred money and here under number three. So you're transferring actual money from Fund nine forty-nine to Fund O O one. So that's the actual side. Now, the budgetary side, we took care of, the budget commission took care of the estimated revenue that went into O O one. Due to that money transfer. And then the other side of that is the appropriations, the fund that is. Transferring the money to O O one, which be nine four nine. And then again in O O one where you'll end up spending money.
Good.
Yeah, there's always two sides to uh our financials. We have the actual side, revenues and expenses, and then we have the budgetary side. Revenue and expenses.
Thank you, Chrissy.
You're welcome.
Uh, five, to approve the transfer appropriations is submitted. And sure, you wanna mention what we exactly find the commissioners?
Yeah, for the commissioners, what we've moved it, moved into was extra. Different funds that I just. Put into there so I can move them around. We are going to owe additional monies in uh municipal courts. There are several different lines that I need to watch for and take care of. We also owe out a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Or insurance that still is in a negative. Amount. So there's going to be some things that have to be covered, but I figured we'll discuss more of that. Saturday.
So. Okay, six, notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control. Uh, for Ohio Springs Inc. Hearing is not being requested on that. Seven, Nick. Nurse Sheriff. Then this.
Sheriff.
Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office. This is just what we discussed last week about extending the time for some of these sub, sub awards, uh, the grantees to get their work done and finished. The majority haven't been, but there's a few that keep coming back. Instead of just, you know, doing them as we go and having, you know, five call this week and two call next week, another one, you know, the following month. We'll just cover it all with this one day.
Good.
And just put it on the website.
Well, the art of.
Yes.
Art of approvals or monies.
Yes.
Okay, Nick.
Uh, item number eight is to approve the submitted satisfaction mortgage for Robert K. Spawn. And during his spawn, um, we assisted for our home program for housing rehabilitation project in twenty fifteen. Uh, it's a ten-year client mortgage. Therefore, at this time, we're requesting you satisfied and release the leap on the ground.
Good. Um, Gary?
Right, thank you, Commissioner. Gary Schaefer, Engineers Office. Number nine is to compare with our office grant right away for permits that are listed. On the ten is to compare with our office grant, especially when you'll supply our fee for that. There's two listed there. What we got this week?
Okay. Move on to eleven. So. That is uh Michelle's report for the monthly activities at the Dark Hand. Month of August. Um. My Beth, you wanna take this?
Uh, not specifically. You're receiving our monthly financial reports for July and August.
Okay.
I just wanted to let the commissioners know, and you've probably received an email. We have two board position openings. Uh, we have sent out an email to over five hundred of our local partners to let them know. There is a link, we have a one page, if you would like those, but we also have a link. Uh, for people to fill out an application. It's a scored. Uh, it's a scored application, and this is the first time we're doing this. So we've shifted from a membership-based organization in twenty twenty-four to a non-membership-based organization, which changes our. Um, our board member selection slightly. If you will. Thank you. Uh, so it's open to anybody. We've already had about ten applications. The deadline is for October twentieth. One is to fulfill a position that had resigned from the board because he was unable to make attendance um and make the meetings on a monthly basis. And the other is a termed out position that will start in January. So we have a board development and engagement committee that will be reviewing those. They will score those, they will go to our board directors for discussion. Hopefully by our um annual meeting on November eighteenth on a Tuesday, uh, we'll be able to have those announcements.
Okay, should we provide a link? On our website?
Did I say that to you?
So. I mean, we can do that.
Oh, good. I feel like we talked about that.
This says on here, Beth, it says county designated seats may serve unlimited terms. Do we have? More than one seat or just a county seat?
Your county seat is um one, it's actually Nick Hawkins represents the county commissioners. So no, if there's an S on this, this is the first time we've done it, so. I apologize, we're. Catching mistakes, but I appreciate that. But yeah, there is one position that is the county commissioners' seat on our board. Our board is eleven people. Well, before we reviewed the bylaws or code of regulations, it was a ten-person board, so we added that so that there, if there was any issues with voting, then we added them. And odd. Sort of. So we're.
Brother.
Thank you. So yes, uh, now we are eleven person.
Okay, so. We can provide one down below in the, I think. On our commissioners page. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
It's thirteen. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Mike Salma, Toronto County Transit Administration, I'm here to do the. Mark Rusing for operating the financial. I am the. The past hour was the information of ridership through August thirty-first. Uh, through August thirty-first, these are all long way trips. We hit um twenty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-three trips. So we are up a hundred and one thousand six hundred fifty-five trips from Europe. Uh, quick breakdown. Seventy percent of, seventy percent of these trips are seniors. And thirty percent are the same. Step by. Um, I'm not gonna go through the sixty-five and older. See the numbers there. Which is up to. Um, but with this sixteen fifty-five, we're projected to do about forty-two thousand trips total. Uh, okay, everybody knows Garland did close their doors as of August thirty-first. So how that's gonna affect us? Um, Garland had, they call it Department of Job and Family Services Title Twenty. Uh. Uh. Contract with. From job family services. Title Twenty allows their clients for trips. Yeah, four trips a month. Transportation. Now, for whatever reason, and again, I don't know why, they weren't able to switch this over. To one of the other contractors like they did with the. Trips, I don't know why. But so I'm saying that, uh. This will definitely increase Toronto County Transit next, or this month right now because August thirty-first, September. Here's what I do know. Department of Job and Family Services Title Twenty has a total of a hundred and twenty-three clients on their list. Presently. We have received about ten that have transferred over. So the others could just be, you know, whenever during the year. They might come home, but as of right now, that's it. And I have no idea if Department of Job and Family Services will be taking over, taking back the Title Twenty, because I don't know what went off. And when the bids are even coming in.
Commissioner. Did we? Our analyst gonna have some? Word on that, right? Yeah. We questioned, you've been questioning it, didn't you?
Well, I think that, are you talking medical or you talking regular transportation, Mike? This is uh Medicaid transportation, usually for doctors. Yeah, I, I think that's different than what I was talking about for normal transportation on a contract last week that he's supposed to get to us. Yeah, I, I, I think that's different, Commissioner, but um. If Diane has a chance to talk, then, then I'm gonna have her explain something else that you've been discussing. About. But I understand that Department of Job and Family Services only does medical trips. They don't do none. Not that I remember.
Listen. Um. When they come for care and um. Um. USA.
Yeah, actually, those are both.
They only do medical?
Yes, they, they do only do medical through their Title Twenty. But they also Medicaid. I wish John was here to explain it. But the Medicaid trips that they put out the bid, that's what they're currently doing right now. They have an RFP out. For medical. Medicaid. Funded transportation. And they do not include wheelchair in that grant request, in that RFP. They only ask providers that can do. What they call ambulatory. If you're non-ambulatory, that's when you need wheelchair transport. Medicaid should be paying for the wheelchair Medicaid recipients. Transportation, but senior levy has been doing it. Forever, I mean, since we've been doing transportation. It should be paid by Medicaid. It's dollars that our state should be paying for, not senior levy.
Right.
For the wheelchair transport. And you consider if somebody's in a wheelchair going to dialysis three days a week, that adds up. Because we, we looked at in two thousand and wheelchair trips to see how much it costs us at that time of a hundred thousand dollars. In a six-month period.
I was there.
We can't bill Medicaid. JFS can't.
And they're all on Medicaid, Diane, like all of those, they're all on Medicaid?
Anybody that's, no, not everybody.
Okay.
We keep track. When we have our people apply, they let us know if they're on Medicaid or not.
Right.
In our list, we highlight those people so that when our vendors. See that they are uh. Medicaid eligible. If they're in a wheelchair, they still, we still transfer.
Okay.
If they're non-wheelchair, I mean, if they're, yeah, if they're ambulatory, then they have to call the Medicaid, the JFS's.
How many would you say of the N E T? So there's the two types, we're talking the N E T and then the Title Twenty, so that's the two.
I'm glad you're aware, because you work there.
I just was trying not to.
Yes.
Um, but. And I know when I was there specifically for the N E T, what we were doing was if they were Medicaid eligible, I remember the spreadsheet, I remember the highlighting. And Diane, um, how many people do we feel like of that hundred and ninety-two-some was the?
Honestly, I haven't reviewed that.
Okay.
Since two thousand eighteen. As we took on the transportation, became more and more involved, and I was having trouble just keeping up.
Okay.
Proving invoices, but I wasn't doing the data review I used to do.
Okay.
Um, I have Mary Beth in the office now that I did solo training. It's one of those things that I, it's on the list or two to review.
Okay.
Is, is that a grant that Job and Family Service has, do they have to apply for that, or do they automatically get that?
Title Twenty, they have to apply for.
Right.
And they have to apply for that.
They do every year, yeah.
But this is the one that recently ended because of Garland closing. And they didn't transfer the Title Twenty consumers to a new vendor. I guess they contractually, maybe they were not allowed. I don't know that.
That, that's what we were told.
But I don't know when that Title Twenty application takes place, or you know, this, it's a January.
I see what you're saying.
So there's a gap. There's a gap that's covering those clients, which will increase our. You know, weak demand. Luckily, the funding is not too tight that we might be able to absorb those ten people for four medical trips a month that Mike was talking about. But I think it expands to twenty-three times four trips a month.
So it might be that the grant, and I don't know, but it might be that the grant was restrictive. Once it was awarded, they couldn't go out, and I understand that because it is, it's a federal per se. I'm not sure which one. No, that's federal.
But the N E T.
But the N E T is different.
Currently out on the streets with an RFP. In fact, they already have their bid opening. Did not include, has not ever included wheelchair transport. In that application.
And it could, so.
And it could, we were told there weren't any wheelchair vendors out there. I know community bus service do wheelchair. Back then. You know.
So.
We have a community bus service does. They've been around. Rather. We have currently expanded to three or four vendors that do wheelchair. So it's becoming more and more.
How do we organize to keep the county from having to pay for services that? Should be paying for.
That's a discussion you need to have with Jobs and Family Services. Why are we not making that out?
We, prior to this board, and I apologize, I don't remember which board members over there. Prior to this board, even prior to the. We had at least two meetings. Uh, with John. Guardians. At both meetings, he said, I don't have. As long as I give them a number to call. It's all him. Now, what we do know is all the surrounding counties. Mahoney County, Ashdabula. They, uh, JFS. Does the wheelchairs. That's what we were told.
Well, commissioners, we're gonna have to find out because it's costing, I mean, we shouldn't be, the county should not be absorbed in. Any cost of. And be handled by.
Medicaid.
For Medicare. Um, and you know, it's a hundred grand, it could go to, who knows if, you know.
Or Diane.
It's over a hundred.
Double. You know, our system is double, so. That has had.
So we're gonna have to have a conversation with.
So presently, you take that money out of your senior levy? And so you could use that.
For other service.
Absolutely.
It's not chump change a hundred grand.
Well, so who's gonna make the call to Job and Family Services?
Well, I think that we.
You know, ask them for a meeting with Diane and Mike.
Well, I mean.
Maybe we'll have, I mean, here, here, Tuesday. Maybe we'll have here next Tuesday.
Well, I would suggest that we do because with what we're looking at. In the future here, that, that hundred grand can escalate to. Two hundred thousand New York minutes. Yeah. So, um. Should we have? Well, we have him here next Tuesday.
Mike and I.
Try to organize something here. And if you could add some numbers for us, Diane.
I don't. Well, there, Beth's off next three days.
Yeah.
I just want to give you this, just is my summary, financial transportation systems, not as elaborate as last. I can, that's down to one page. But what I. What I just wanted to, that, that top section, the shorter section, it says net after grants. Right now, the disabled is being supported by two hundred thousand dollar local match. We, it looks like we used about a hundred fifty thousand of that. Current year. Did, so I'm saying that we have another fifty thousand, maybe those. A Title Twenty rides that will be absorbed by that, I don't know. It's not real tight, so I think that will be okay. Uh, Board of D D, they support us with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar local match. They are, uh, it looks like they will only spend sixty-five thousand of that. And then senior levy, we support with a seven fifty thousand dollar promise, and we're getting closer at six hundred ninety thousand dollar. So as the demand goes up, so does. And as the expenses go up, transportation. So right now, net, we figure for the year, um. This number is just showing through August for the net amount. We're at thirteen dollars, fifty-five dollars per trip. That's because we've got a grant, six hundred thousand dollars to cover uh the first half of the year. Second half of the year is gonna be all out of local. So we look to be about at thirty-five dollars per trip. Budget. Any questions? We may see you next Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll continue with Mike. So regarding the fifty-three ten grant, I just talked about it. Thank you, Commissioner, for signing the grant. Uh, so twenty twenty-six fifty-three grant has been executed, right? So we do have the new grant executed. This grant period is from July twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The grant amount is at four hundred, two hundred thirty-six thousand, hundred sixty-two dollars.
Or note, that's a hundred twenty thousand less than last year.
Yeah.
So again, that's money that's needed in our system. Hundred twenty thousand plus.
Yeah, the final, final thing I have regarding transportation part of it is the coordination plan. And regarding the coordination plan, they're trying to wrap it up. They're hoping it will be approved by East State in December, at the December meeting. If it is, uh, I will let commissioners know, because they're gonna be doing a, you know, presentation at the meeting, which would go over. What's actually in coordination plan, and maybe one of you could. Join that meeting to see. What's in the coordination plan? So that's good for the other reports.
When is the meeting again?
Okay, there, if everything goes okay, we're hoping to do it in the December meeting, and it's usually. Uh, first week in December, right? Yeah.
First Thursday.
That's usually, that's, that's, because it's, it wouldn't be the tag meeting, not. It's not the general policy.
Quartering now, like I can't.
I can't keep up either, so I don't know, it's the December meeting, that's all they, that's all I was told. It's not a policy board. But either, well, yeah, either they're, they're both in the first week, but one's on a. Monday and one's on a Thursday. Usually. It's actually Thursday. Uh, yeah, that's. Yeah. Attack just makes for conditions. This is a policy that they have to update. Right, maybe you reviewed attack, but it ultimately has to be. Okay, or, or general policy for it. That's the one that's on my list. I don't know, off the top of my head, but that's the one, Russell. What we had is a general policy for working. For some. So I'll let you know. If it happens. But that's, that's the.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
I have the next one.
Well, you do, but I was scared.
That's the human policy.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is to amend the Toronto County Transit but human policy. This is regarding the meeting, uh, fifty-three ten O day, fifty-three ten O dot. Uh, prior review that we had. That we had to amend it, and. There's a couple of things I had to go under. Number one, last time we did the policy, their template, it was, uh, they probably did it in twenty twenty-one or twenty. So their template had to be updated. So the information that's in here is the information that they actually updated. For their policy, and it was reviewed by prosecutor Jake Stowe. That it's been okay. The other part of it is, um, I have to put in their language, which I've done. That the vendors will. On a yearly basis, do training for both Title Six. And uh, ADA, they do training for it, but it's gotta be on a yearly basis. So that's gonna be. So, and the other part that I was thinking of is that, once we do this, and I don't know, I have, maybe I have to add this. But then it has to go to the contract, we have to add to the contracts. Amendment to the contracts. Right? Bill or not?
I, if you're adding to the requirements, I would assume so.
So I assume we would add to, so would that have to go as an agenda item?
Probably.[1693.89]
So that's probably one thing I would have to add to. Now, the only thing I don't know is I had asked. Jim Stowe, Jake Stowe, to uh review a couple of sections, and I haven't heard back from him yet. So I don't know if we want to put this off till next week or not, uh and one of the sections happens to be a type of. The keywords you have, which are small, medium, large, in the dollar amounts, and I just wanna make sure the dollar amounts match. With the commissioner's hand, just, I know that's larger than seventy seven thousand five hundred or something like that, I can't remember the other. But I haven't got anything back yet, so I don't really want to table this next week.
Yeah, Bill Danson Prosecutor's Office, I, I don't know if there's maybe, I'll talk to Jason, there may be some discommunication, but. Jason, I know, had gone from the back and forth on this, and there's a. A, a large portion of this is, is really. Just policy writing, it's not legal, and it keeps getting pushed back to legal to. Hey, how about you draft this, how about you get this? I think with all due respect, Mike, I think a lot of this is really. You know, maybe between you and the commissioners to kind of figure out what their policy. Is, and then you're kind of making sure yours is the same. We'll review it for legal compliance, but I think that. A lot, a lot of this, it's really just stuff that we've gotta just have the policy amended, and then make sure that you're. You know, checking on that, those amendments, so I'll get with Jason, I'll make sure that we're all on the same page on it, but I think that. The legal review is pretty much substantially done at this point, and it's just a question of making sure that those, those changes that have been recommended. That's where I understand it, maybe. Okay.
And then you should, that was my question, I had to stop though, with the dollar amounts, it should be in box.
Okay, well, again, the, the dollar amounts, though, I, you know. The dollar amounts are governed by revised code, and I think Jason did send you that, the competitive bidding threshold is seventy seven thousand. Dollars right now, that is, I mean, legally speaking, that is the bidding threshold, you know, so. If, if the FTA or another group is asking you to come up with small purchase amounts, medium purchase amounts. Large, there, there is no statute in Ohio that governs anything other than, is it greater than that amount or is it not, so? Now, if the commissioners have chosen to enact other things, you know, as far as. Does it, you know. Fire three price quotes, things like that, you know, that, that's a policy thing that can be made, but. You know, right now, as far as the law goes, it's seventy seven thousand two fifty, that will change as of. Uh beginning of the year, again, that's adjusted now every year for. Essentially inflation, but that's going to be, uh. Trying to remember if it's the Department of Commerce, that there's a specific state agency that puts out a new total every year. So that will come out after the first of the year, but again, I'll check with Jason to figure out where we're at, but I, I thought that we were pretty much wrapped up on the legal end at this point, but I'll. I'll verify.
So you would suggest, you would suggest just to move forward with this?
It's, it's up to the commissioners, if you feel more comfortable waiting till next week till we clear it up, I have no problem with that, it's, it's whatever you guys are comfortable with.
I just need to make sure the seventy seventeen fifty seven that I can.
That's okay.
That was the.
He's, you know, he's working on some other things down there right now, but I can get him to, to maybe take a look again, see if we are all settled.
Yeah, I'll have it, I'll have it.
So then just keep it on.
Whatever the dollar amounts of Jason, I mean, the seventy seven figure already gave me, the other ones, whatever they are per short purchases, it's usually three thousand.
Okay.
Sure, so the other thing would be, is then I guess I would have to add an agenda item. To amend the contracts.
Well, I guess, one more question, Bill Danson Prosecutor's Office. Are these, are the, the things that you're going to amend the contract for, are these FTA requirements that have. Changed or?
This was through the tower, which was all that.
O dot, okay, so I'm assuming that we still have a portion in those contracts that say they've got to comply with all the O dot and FTA requirements. So if, if that's the case, then perhaps an amendment's not necessary, but maybe just a. Notice to the vendors that, hey, this, you've agreed to do this already in your contract to comply with FTA O dot requirements. And here's the new, you know, O dot requirements that they're expecting to be, you know, tech compliance. You know, you might want to just double check, if, if that's already in there, maybe you could apply to have a contract amendment.
Yeah, I'm very sure it's been there.
I thought it was too.
And I've already notified verbally, they haven't done a writing.
Sure.
So that's not a problem, I can, I can write. There, on a yearly basis. Which they already are doing, it's just that, not on a yearly basis.
Right.
So, it's not a big deal.
So we won't have to add an agenda item? Like, yeah, as long as he has, as long as he can verify that's in the contract that way.
Pretty sure, like, Bill said, I'm pretty sure I'll follow that.
Good.
That's it.
Eric.
Well, he is, I don't know if we wanna, we only got seventeen agenda items, so maybe we could bring that up after you're.
Okay, alright. Uh Gary, new brought sanitary engineer, Commissioner's item fifteen, this is for the officials. Item sixteen, this is uh something that is. Pretty the private extension we've ever done. Amazon has done that private extension of the sanitary super now for his show on the road. Uh service their new facility. And along the route, there are uh twenty seven properties that require a connection to that. And they have volunteered to pay the tap fees and uh. Also part of fees for this twenty seven projects, I have received the check and I had deposited. And uh I have sent a portion back to their health department, I'll get letters out to all the residents, letting them know, hey, your health, your. That could be in uh health department fees are already paid.
They still have to run it from the.
Yeah, see, they, the residents will still have a cost of running it from the connection point out. By the road to their home, but, but this.
Some of them get to pay that, do they have an hearing on that, to accept that or anything, or is that just something they're forced to bet?
We're only required to notify them that that is going to.
They never had to have a hearing, whether they wanted to do that or accept the water line at all?
No.
Still, yes. That foot is a hundred a foot? Or maybe even more now, that. No, what I'm saying is, even though they gotta pay from there to tap in, if you were to run that sewer. Line, what is that per foot now?
Uh, yeah, we, we would be somewhere between seventy five. But there are no assessments there, no reimbursements, no tapping fees. Uh their only cost is gonna be the, the cost of their contractor, but at the same time, they have volunteered to do it. They were sort of locked into because Amazon is performing a private extension, and as a result, there's gonna be a sewer.
And they have to tap in a sewer, so they have to do it whether they like it or not.
Yeah, they have the year to do it, correct?
Yes, and, and the health department can make some exception. In the event that they do have a modernized.
Right, they just put it down.
Yes, uh they, they will give the people waiver, I think they give it to them.
So will this money be set aside then for the tapping when they're ready?
Yes.
Or is that gonna be absorbed in us if they don't, they decline?
We. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it, let's see if they're.
So it's like a one-time deal, if they want this, they have to come up with the money to pay the.
The contractor from the road to the house.
If they don't want it, they're gonna lose out on this potentially, or possibly lose out on the whole deal, they don't move the money. And that's not something they can put on their taxes, like the sewer line, because they're paying interdependent contractor. I'm surprised everyone paid for that too. I mean, you're right.
Maybe they weren't asked.
Can we try, can we ask potentially maybe on behalf of the residents, or, I mean, because they're putting a big bill for the sewer line itself, and for the tapping. The bill in the middle, I mean, you're talking. About a couple thousand apiece.
No person asks, right, I mean, you know.
Uh I, I can make that, I can ask for it, I don't want to ask for two points, but hit this first and I'll go back. Let's see if we can do it, it does sound a lot harder.
I, I still like the fact they're being forced, they're gonna get a letter that says within ninety days you have to do this, and then you can waive it for. Whatever it is, I was in that position myself when I moved into my house, and, and, you know. Seventeen thousand dollar bill, ninety days after I moved to my house, that was forced up, and pay the tapping, and pay the inspection. And pay that.
Because you have front footage, they have the assessment on the front footage.
Right, they have no assessment on front footage, but if some of these people have. Is this gonna cover like crushing their subject tank or removing their subject tank?
No, that, that's all part of the connection.
So that's a little bit of fee there to remove or crush the subject tank?
All requesting Amazon to pay this, this was a real easy house thing. This is what the tap payment is gonna be. When a tug comes to those connections, those are not fixed costs, I have a different cost on her. Get different costs on her house. We normally, while we do, do connections. Don't ask, he goes out, specs every house, figures out exactly how much pipe we need, what else plumbing limitations are. And we lock it in, and we fit it out to the granulars, they fit on it, because. That's a hard number to. Yeah, Amazon.
You would have to go out to do all those properties in advance of it.
Right.
To get them.
Do those people have water over there already?
Yes, they're all more than water.
Nick, do we have, have you, who's been contacting Amazon from the county?
Amazon, they have a strong fit, so Amazon, uh they first came, talked to them. They've been working right with Senator here, talks about uh. Any incidents from like for, for jobs in Ohio, county. Said that they didn't want anything, just wanted us to get out of.
I mean, is there any link there for ribbon cutting, I mean, we've got Kimberly Clark, counties involved.
Yeah, I mean.
We've got no involvement in all of this.
They, then that's the way they wanted it, they basically said, tell us what we have to do to get our permits, so you get out of our way. That's, you know.
They're going to format, they give them permits, sanitary had to deal with them.
Sanitary, but they've shoulder all the costs, they've taken doing setups, they've done nothing, they, they. They basically just want to get going and figured out what, what permitting they needed. How to have that permitting, signs they needed, and shoulder all the costs on there.
Do you know if they're involved with the chamber or anything like that for grand opening or?
I don't know if chambers worked in grand opening out with them, um but I found that out very easily.
We didn't, we didn't, I don't think they came to us, they didn't come this for any bait, no, we didn't give any bait.
No, that's like they, they were coming, then all, you see this development, that whole neighborhood is getting developed, people are buying properties and stuff, even before Amazon got there. So it's gonna be a big economic hub in that neighborhood, I'm just surprised we don't have any involvement at all with the company. Or, I mean, some of the satellite companies around it, maybe.
We, we, we work with some of the companies that are around there currently, uh prior to it coming in. Um and we're still in conversations with a couple of them, uh that need smaller items, uh but. Yeah, we, Amazon, like I said, they, they basically asked, what do we have to do so that the management have not asked for any system.
That's the Amazon way, they've done that in other areas, same thing, three hundred jobs, no payment, I'll pay. Um, so yeah, it's three hundred jobs, two fifty.
I thought it was seventy five to a hundred twenty five or something. You know any different, Commissioner?
No, we'll find out, but the good thing is, it didn't cost the county anything, and they're there, and they're paying the, the way, and they're. They're helping out some residents, and hopefully they'll help out some more.
Uh Lisa, one thing, on that, down in the bowl of whites. TC Superfund is six oh two, not six oh one, down at the bottom.
Gary, are we gonna have any adjustments for stoplights, streetlights, road or anything like that, road wide?
I did want to say something here at the end, thank you, Commissioner, Gary Shaker Engineer's Office. Uh they did a traffic impact study in that area, no, nothing would be added, uh. There's a traffic lights, O dot checked their signal timing, everything's gonna be fine. Um go back to how many employees, I really don't know what the end is gonna be, but there's eleven parking spaces there, a lot of runner vans. Not all employee parking, several hundred just for uh.
Eleven forty.
There's gonna be several shifts there too, that's why there's not gonna be a lot of traffic loading. We kick the signal timing adjustments, so they just widened that intersection, they did it from the intersection, Archmont. As directed by our office, they're gonna resurface entire. Marchmont all the way to Oak Blackstone on their own dock. And there was grant money available to assist them, but. And the money was, and they didn't want to be slowed down, they don't want to slow down at all, they just want to roll forward, put everything down.
That's like shipping. Oh, the trucks can be allowed to go to Oakland Blackstone, we're all.
Uh we did order them to put up signage, no trucks beyond, I think it's the furthest east entrance. Um that's it, all trucks could be wrecked in fact, Archmont maybe too.
So the neighbors won't be impacted by trucks.
That's correct, they do see them, they. Because, you know, they're gonna have contracted drivers, not gonna be all Amazon drivers. Whatever we gotta do to educate them, sure, trust me, that, Archmont. You have a contact name and number that maybe Commissioner Hernandez, can you reach out to them and? We'll go back to my emails and get them, so, yeah, it was early on, it's been a while, we've been dealing with the contract the last year. And then the two, then you can reach out to them and just find out where their.
Should have been some permits too, or maybe there's gonna be someone.
I mean, they're, they're ready to go, I mean, they're up in front of care.
But, Gary, if you want to provide a number.
I'll get it, you said that again.
Okay. Gary. Daryl, you have some cars scrapped?
Yes, Daryl Donegan, uh facilities from County. Uh looking for authorization to scrap the listed vehicles. I just wanna focus on, these are unfit for use. Due to uh serious disrepair. Uh all usable parts have been taken off of them, I just wanted to clarify that because my phone blew up the last time.
Yeah, we got a lot of emails about that too, somebody wanting cars and.
Are, are they paying, paying us for these vehicles again?
Yeah, they're going to Metalico, and it's a, a flat rate for each vehicle.
At how much?
Uh five hundred.
Sherri Taylor, Commissioner's Office, um the fifth vehicle down, I just want to notate that it's a typo, it should start with eight.
Two A H?
Two F A H.
Oh, two F.
So are these over on uh Panther now?
Yes.
So the, this is the last of the cars on Panther, need to get out there, this is the last of those vehicles.
Okay, um. About Friday, we had to close the building, you wanna kind of comment on that, Daryl, what we're working it up against, I wanna commend. Alex for. Her assistance in notifying, you know, me and us having closed the building, that's, that's not always an easy call, but. Could you just amplify a little bit, what her up against?
So we had a uh six inch uh cast iron sewer line. Uh horizontal run through the uh drop ceiling on the first floor. Uh it had been admitting, emitting an odor for uh a couple of days, and once we inspected. Uh found a crack down the side of that pipe, probably about a twelve foot length. Uh contractors were here that day, uh came back last night. Were here till about eight o'clock last night replacing that, and now we're in the process of inspecting the rest of the wall.
Right, and um. That, that particular pipe, while I was here with Alex, and I, I came in to expect that that pipe runs the distance. Of the building, is that correct?
Yeah, the full length from front to back of the.
And we smoked it, just, we, we did a smoke test just to.
Did a smoke test.
And then we found other areas.
Yes, and again, we're going through each floor and checking lines on the additional floors as well.
Okay, and, and, you know, it was a hard call to make, but it wasn't a hard call, because we want to protect the employees, and we wanted to make sure that. You know, anyone coming in the building uh publicly wasn't affected, I, because it was a pretty horrid smell, so. Um, thank you, and Alex, thank you for going over and above the call of duty. Um, okay, so. Couple other things, um before, and we have Mr. Gargano here, which we'll get to shortly, um. I just wanted to mention to the commissioners, I did, uh, because he did print out these dog pound applications for the committee. So that the commissioners could view these.
Does the deadline pass on these, these are all? Do we have a deadline?
So far, Michelle Goss provided these, and uh.
Right, what's the deadline of scientists, or they all have?
I'm not sure, what was the deadline? I, I don't remember where the deadline was. In addition to that, um Diane uh sponsored, senior services sponsored the Senate hearing, that was a nice. I attended on behalf of the commissioners, and they made the front page of the crib, and that was nice to see. Um. Let's see. Uh Commissioner Bernard and I just attended the Coleman Health Ribbon Cutting, and that was well attended, a major attendance there. And uh, that's a very, that's a beautiful facility that they put together there, uh. Did we provide Arco money for that? Do you remember, no? I'm, I'm sorry?
I think the city.
The city did their Arco funds, okay. The city did their ARCA funds, okay.
Okay, we had a request.
So, uh, hats off to April and and April Caraway and and her crew there. Um, and everyone involved. It's a beautiful building and it's gonna house, it's also, it's the first. From what I understand in Ohio to actually house, uh, so a couple, two residents or so in the building. Their families. Um, okay, so, Mr. Gargano, I know you're here. Your problem, we're watching what we were asking. About the medic, uh, the transport.
John Gargano, JFS. I heard a little bit about, I was in a meeting. Uh, so who came here? I brought Melissa Bin and my fiscal administrator that has a lot of information on that, so. I'm open to whatever questions that you, uh, commissioners had and.
Well.
Worried to, uh, discuss the reason.
Yeah. Primarily it was, are we, is the county paying for transports that we shouldn't be paying for? That could be covered by. Was it Medicaid or Medicare? Medicaid, uh, John, uh, maybe.
Chair Medicaid Transportation.
How we can, you know, transition that from the county paying for those services?
Melissa Bin and Jeff, uh, um, we don't currently pay for wheelchair transport for Medicaid. We never. For any M T, we never have paid for that service because it's covered in the capitation rate that Medicaid pays. To all of the contracted service providers. Just this month, when I was in my O B G F S fiscal meeting, the Department of Medicaid did a presentation. That included the list of those providers and the actual contact information. For those providers for them to receive that service because Medicaid is already paying for that service on an unlimited basis. Through those, those Medicaid service providers, whether it's at United Healthcare, whoever that is. They're already being paid for that service. That's why it's not covered under our N E M T, um. I will, I'm happy to share the list with whomever needs it. Our workers have the list, so if they get that call. They look in the Medicaid system, they look and they see who the service provider is and they refer them directly. I know that I have personally assisted. Someone who needed wheelchair transport like immediately with getting that set up the same day. So for us on our end, it's not been a problem. Because it's already being paid for and we assist those customers when that, when those calls come.
So.
So if we have people on our list that are wheelchair and Medicaid, we should give that name back to you for you to give to them. Their list of vendors that they would call to get that service. But I mean, that. That's, I don't know if that's a HIPAA issue, if you need to refer them to to us to make, for them to call us. If you have a release of information where you can give us that information, I'm not sure we wanna get caught up. For you giving their information to us if you don't have the appropriate piece. That's my only concern at that. Wish to say something.
Well, no, I'm not just, cause you're the one that put that application together. The very top of our application, it states that. You're you're allowing us to give your information to provide all the providers. So I don't think there'd be HIPAA law. Because.
I don't know. I've never seen John Gargano, JFS. I've never seen your application. So I can't speak to that. It may have to even discuss that.
Right, I can discuss that, uh, on that. But I I would think because it it stays right at the very top that we could give this information. That's the application that you took out, that's what I'm saying. So I can discuss. Well, maybe Alex would have.
Identifying factor. So does on the actual application say, are you on Medicaid? Okay, so, yes. If they're on Medicaid, then I'm just, general question of why would they not call their managed care provider, their M C O, their Medicaid to reach that right?
That's why I've always wondered why they fell over, even got involved with us because. Wouldn't the person who is their case worker advise them if they're on Medicaid as far as their transportation? Well, I I, Melissa Bin and Jeff, that's again, I I think you're. The transportation workers that receive those referrals for transportation are not the same workers that are determining eligibility. That those are two separate departments in in two different areas of the building. So if the person called in and said they needed transportation. The the worker on the main two thousand line or that customer service line. Would then just refer them to that department. And then the department would go through, they have a list of questions that they ask initially. Um, they go in and then look at that Medicaid eligibility, all that kind of thing. So if they were referred specifically to. The transportation department, yes, the worker would assist them. Because again, they have that current list. They've been provided with that, um. Did, uh, a couple of years ago, I went out, I contacted. Via email, whatever services we had that we knew. I asked them which managed care plans they were contracted with so that locally we would have that information. Not every service provider was responsive to me, but I did compile the list at that time.
I'm I'm all confused. I have, I have, I I have one question. Diane, Diane said that it's costing her maybe sixty to a hundred thousand dollars.
It's gonna go.
Okay. My question is, could John Family Service take that? Relieve her that sixty to a hundred thousand dollars? Yes, or no? Do you agree with that?
They're on Medicaid, so Medicaid should be able to pay for that transportation. Right, but A M T is not a wheelchair transport service and I think that's the issue. That's the issue. So so they say they refer it back to their managed care plan because it is being paid for. What happens is the state of Ohio, when they contract with those managed care plans, the state of Ohio pays what's called a capitation rate. To that managed care provider for every person. Whatever that contracted rate is, for every person that's on the managed care plan to cover whatever services they get the entire month. So if the four people here are on managed care and the capitation rate is. Three thousand dollars per person, even if Alex never uses the service for four months. The state of Ohio is still paying that twelve thousand dollars for that capitation rate because she's on the managed care plan. So it evens out. So all the services are the same for every person. And they're paying for that service, that wheelchair transport service in the capitation rate. So I think that the the main issue is, why are the individuals who are reaching out? To get this service, not using the managed care plan with the evidence?
That's. This so, so basically. The state's paying and we're paying.
Well, we're only pay, the state does not pay for, um. Non-ambulatory services. So if I can, I can leave my house and I can with minimal assistance be able to get in the car. Or whatever the vehicle is and ride independently. That's not emergency medical transportation. The state does not pay for that. We pay for that through the county, through the federal funds that we receive. The the wheelchair transport is what's paid for in the capitation rate to the managed care providers.
So how do we?
So if somebody is on Medicaid and in a wheelchair, I'm just saying, what? You can't use our service. You have to call your provider list. Let's give it to them. Now, that's my question. Cause I get this. People call, I mean, what I heard. Is once they find out, once they're said that they're in wheelchair and have Medicaid, all senior life. That's what the people were telling us. To register. I mean, I can't address that. I would have to speak to the supervisor and the workers to know for sure, but those workers know. They're supposed to be referring them to the managed care plan. I mean, cause we've been, we've had these conversations before. And we can certainly reiterate that to them. I don't have an issue. And if you have someone is specifically telling you that, if you can notify us and then we can get down to. Which worker said this and and that's the only way we're gonna be able to address this to really assist you with that issue. We don't have any, I'm I'm sure that no one in our office has any issue assisting. We all know the the current financial climate in the county, um. Like, what do you know about other counties that deal with the N E M T? I don't have that expertise. That's.
I don't know about all the counties. Jordan, cause that I do know, Department of Job and Family Services does do. So that's, that's part I do know. Now, why we don't. I have no idea. I mean, I know what you're explaining. I understand what you're explaining, but I don't know why we don't. But I do know. Most of the other counties surrounding us and through, I do.
Okay, I can't address them. I mean, I've been in fiscal since two thousand and four. Other than when O E A, the Office of Early Affairs was in existence. They were, that was the only wheelchair transport that we had. And the only reason that they did that was because at the time Gary Anstrom was the director. And he had his unit rate set up in such a way that it combined all of the funding sources that he had. So that. He just provided the same service to everyone. So when that service went away, all of our wheelchair transport went away because we had. As an agency, that was not anything that we had ever funded specifically for the reason that Medicaid pays for that and it's already being paid. Additionally. Our, those N E M T dollars do not support the staff in our office. The staff in our office is supported by income maintenance dollars. And those dollars are completely separate. So if we add that service, we're looking at having to add staff. And there's a burden on those income maintenance dollars. In October of twenty twenty-six, those dollars are gonna go from a fifty fifty local federal match. To a seventy-five local match with twenty-five from the federal government. So we're already scrambling in our office to figure out how to combine job duties and and make this work. So that we don't, right now, the only local money that we get to cover that fifty fifty is the mandated share that the commissioners are required to provide. If we can't figure out internally how to do that. We would then have to come back to the commissioners and say, the mandated share is not enough. So for us to add staff and more staff than we already have allocated. To provide services under incoming and so there's in our office, it's gonna be an additional financial burden. For something again that the state is already paying. I think it sounds to me like we need to try a little bit more coordination. Um, and working with the staff to make sure that all of the appropriate information is being provided.
That's what it sounds like.
I think you need to reach out to those counties that you know that. John Family Services providing, see exactly how they're doing it. Let us know, okay? And see if it is an additional cost on staff or whatever. See what they tell us. You know, a- at least we're starting the conversation.
Yeah, we need to just find out.
Right.
To organize it, you know, like you had said, I mean. If we should organize with one another and try to figure this thing.
Can we call the individuals that we can identify and have them call J F S? And get that ball rolling, point them towards their, I don't have channels as well.
How many do we have?
I don't know, cause I don't, I don't maintain the membership list. I haven't done that since Mike.
Well, at least.
If they completely understand what they have to do, so, so they can get to transportation that's legal for them.
Not, or if, if this, if we're going to do that, I would have to. I communicate with the supervisor in that area and maybe that's who you would have to contact or send. Individuals too.
Do we have a number that I would direct them to?
Well, let me, let me discuss this with the supervisor first and then once I have, uh, I'll give you that name and number and. Her email.
You can email me that. And what's the stats? Mike's talked about title twenty. What's the status of title twenty with J F S? We're actually. Uh, Melissa Bin in J F S, we're actually waiting to see if D C Y is gonna keep the social service operating grant this year. If they keep that social service operating grant because it was given over to them in the budget, in the state budget, it's gonna be. Over a hundred thousand dollar hit to that area. So at this point, we are trying to determine how many funds. We're gonna have available to get more title twenty services for the contracted services. As well as to support the staff that's in that area of the building, because that doesn't include our adult technical services.
So my one question, yes, what do you think of the, if you were to take title twenty back, what's the earliest you think you would?
I'm sorry, I can't.
A timeline. What's, in other words, if you were to take title twenty back. Timeline, what's the earliest you think you could take it back? November, December?
Start providing the service again? We had, we had a bit of a discussion about that yesterday and we were a little bit stoned in the air. Those rides are limited also.
Right, there's four rides.
Yeah, that's, they're they're limited to four rides.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you, Melissa, for coming up. I appreciate that. Save us, uh.
Next week.
Next week. Okay, um, all right, so that concludes our regular agenda items. I see the sheriff's here. Do you have something, Sheriff? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Adrian.
Commissioners, I had, uh, E M A had a meeting for us yesterday that I attended. Um, it was police chiefs, fire chiefs, representatives hazmat and E M A board. They called an independent of the E M A director. And they wanted to express, they're getting pretty antsy with, uh. The coroner being in the E M A building. They had a hazmat situation recently where they couldn't get to their, uh. Stuff they used to give, take oil off the road. It was on shelves behind the coroner's equipment. And the guy who's our hazmat director, uh, they have to use a. A, uh, cart dolly to get to it and there's water lines and electrical lines on the ground. They can't, couldn't go over. With the dolly to get the stuff. And these were like eighty or hundred pound bags. It's a guy's got one arm. He couldn't lift the bags and get to them, so it delayed response. They've also had two or three instances recently. Where hazmat went in to get their equipment and they were in the middle of an autopsy, had to wait, uh, what they needed. Or they couldn't get to the equipment right away until they got more help because the coroner's equipment's blocking all their shelving, what they have. Um, they said that John's been very patient. Um, but they're, they're done with the patience end of it as far as the police chiefs, fire chiefs and hazmat. That we need to do something about the coroner immediately or get John out of there. What they recommended yesterday was. John's ready to go. If we can allocate the ARCA money that's left over already allocated to him and make the decision. They can move, he can get out of there now and the coroner can do whatever he wants with that whole building. They'll get their stuff out of there. There's three phases to this that they figured. One is the coroner, they understand. Second is E M A, third is the sheriff's, uh, equipment that's in there. And, uh, John did go on his own to get a bid and he came up with a three hundred some thousand dollars to move him. And then another three hundred some thousand for a building to store equipment, which everybody in the room thought was way high. Uh, for for that, uh, right now, sheriff's working from what they said, they don't use that building for anything, even though their equipment's there. Um, there isn't even internet in that building for a deputy to use, be doing reports or anything from what they said.
That's to use the building.
They do use it. See, John, John, they brought John in and John said this office hasn't been used in six months. There's not even internet.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Yeah, they have their cars for that stuff. So and they said to use Bristol. Also is Bristol Township Hall, the deputies use for reports and restroom or something, they said.
When outpost set Bristol Fire.
Right, and they, so they said there are other, other options. Mega Fire Chief was there. He said they can utilize our building at any time. They use Bristol. So they said if we could just get a building, a pole building somewhere, put it on Panther, put it. At the engineer's garage, which has been offered, put it at Hubbard Outpost, somewhere to store a boat. Um, they also said that there's a trailer that was in there for the boat during the summer and they 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 asked why couldn't that be put outside and chain no fence or. Put somewhere where it could be secured, just a boat trailer. That wouldn't take up so much space. So they said that, they wanted to sep- us to separate the issue. They said that building is gonna be for E M A hazmat and drone team to leave it just for that and then find another. Alternative for the sheriff to store his equipment. And they al- they also brought up. The tag unit garage, could they put the boat in the tag unit garage? We were in there. They, they had, I don't. Twelve cars in there or something like that. There's some space where it looked like. The boat could be backed in there potentially for winter and climate controlled environment in, in the same building, but on the other side. Uh, uh, where the coroner's building is, or will be, where tag already is utilized. So they had. They'd ask me to ask you about that, if the boat could be put in there for security.
Sheriff Wilson, Trump County Sheriff's Office. There's more than just a boat. We have a truck. Have two boats and a dive team trailer. At a minimum. They need to be secured in a restricted access area. Can't be chained up outside where people have access to this equipment. This is law enforcement equipment that needs secure. People can't have access to, so there's not enough room in the tag building to put our equipment in because the tag vehicles are in there. And there's more than just a few cars for tag. They have a lot of different vehicles that are used in undercover operations. So I agree that the three hundred and some thousand for building connected to that was way too high. I had no involvement in any of that. Engineering or plans that. So hey, you came up with. Uh, what our stuff would do, just we need to be close to the lake as well. Can't take it down to Hubbard or it can't be down on Panther. It needs to be somewhere we can actually deploy in a good manner. The boat is in the water, but the dive team trailer is not. That has to be, uh, available so. To have a good response. I'm open to suggestions. Don't wanna pull up John's, uh, progress for the E M A. I'm all for that. I think it's a good thing. Uh, but our equipment needs to be secured somewhere that it's gonna be safe from any vandalism. Secured access, restricted access, and we're on water or something because it's getting older. We don't have money to replace that equipment. So it needs to be in a cemented garage.
So we've got the money, you got the money for the move. We don't have the money.
For the building. Because that was anything that was approved before. We've been denied buildings.
Yeah, and, and I, and I.
Kids' police garage.
Sheriff Wilson, Trump County Sheriff's Office. And this was planned long before I came home in January. And we're going off with a few, the plans that John had started, uh, the E M A director. And, uh, sheriff's office at the time. So. We wanna make sure everything's done correctly for everybody. But if this plan wasn't initiated by our office. Our administration and John Hickey. And we're here to support and help. But on the other end, we also need to be taken care of or put apart with because we don't want any damage or.
Is there, is there anywhere else we put the vehicles besides the boat in another garage and the corner garage and no dog garage and. Behind the fence here, somewhere else Panther? That whole big huge lot of Panther, could we put a building up there for that?
We'd have to research that, but the truck and the dive team trailer would just simply at the fairground place because it's a good. So we'll have to find a place. Where it's close.
Well, you know, we met with John Hickey. We told him what our plans were. They were waiting for. Department of Treasury to okay us with some funds. You know, they have to have some patience, guys.
And they, they said they listened to the meetings and they're all finished.
You know, I don't, I don't really know how they got there. The previous board put them there. And it, it's probably our situations are correct, but you know what? They're gonna have to give us some time, all right? Because we said, look. We sent a letter. We're trying to get them funds to, to make the move. They just have to have some patience, you know? Everybody's trying to push us for the dog pound nine one one, the coroner, nine, you know, everything. Just have some patience. We know what the needs are. I talked, I spoke last week with John Hickey. I told him, we're waiting, we're, all right, have some patience. And now they're pushing us again. We know what the situation is, okay? Can't throw the sheriff out, you know? Just give us some time to correct, all right? We all said that we'd like to make the move. We just need to find the funds to do it. All right, I mean, just. Everybody needs to relax. We know the situation.
I, I tried to elaborate that as one commissioner. They are coming in tomorrow. They're sending a police chief, a fire chief, hazmat. They said, this is not John Hickey's call. He wasn't even in the meeting. This was their president, the board. Of their E M A board called the meeting and they said, we understand John's patient, patient. He's a nice guy. He, he doesn't want any ripples. But we need to speak on behalf of John. Because we're, we're, the police chiefs and firemen, they're the ones that are fed up with, with the delay. Not, they're not blaming, not putting the blame on anybody. It's just. When a hazmat team is called out, he said they specialize in emergency response. Immediately being reactive. And when something happens, they go. And he said there, now it's like they're being held up where they can't. Mobilize because there, there might be. An autopsy going on that's gonna, that's secure. There might be. A murder victim at one time and no one could get in the building while, while the coroner's doing their work there. The other thing they said is they had concerns. With even that building. Because they said that, that, that they gotta keep the doors open. So they had a meeting last night with thirty some people, thirty some. Firemen on, uh, mass casualty training. And they had to have all the doors open all day yesterday to air the place out because there was something done in there recently with some bodies. And they said even the coolers in there, the keys are in the coolers. It's not a secure environment right now. And when they come and go to get their stuff, they said, you know, they don't wanna touch any of the corner stuff. They don't wanna move his stuff without anyone being there and they're not there very often. You know, the bodies are there, but they're not there very often. They're only there when they're doing autopsies. So he said it is a concern that they don't want to be in a situation if a tornado were to hit or. When FBI came in and used their building, you know, for that murder, whatever they had, you know, and, uh, Warren. You know, they, there were people in and out of that building all the time. He said, we really don't even have a hazmat place.
Didn't he okay for the coroner's office?
Till May, he said. He said the agreement was we were gonna leave the bodies there till May, or the, uh. The coroner was gonna be there until May.
I have a question. For the sheriff, or not for the sheriff, but. It, cause we use some opioid monies for the sheriff. Can we somehow or other. Delegate opioid monies for use of, uh. You know, for, for storage of these, um, boat and the vehicles for whatever purpose maybe they may be going with. You know, whether it's drugs.
I don't know how you tie that into a drowning with a dive tank. I said, I don't know how you tie that into.
Maybe through the body and the, the light. I don't. They wouldn't let us use it for the coroner's office. I don't think. Yeah, but they let us use it for the sheriff for some other.
Uh, it does a nexus to. Every, every bit of money has to have a nexus to deal with, so enforcement or education.
Sheriff, do you think? Buildings out.
If we were, farm buildings out there, they have farm buildings that are thirty seven thousand dollars for a pole building. If we were to put it on the cement at the Cortland Engineer's Office. Where you can lock it up and it's secured inside the fence at there, lock the building up and it's on cement and it's on a thing. Would you be open to something like that of, of storing it there? I mean, you, you can use the bathroom at the coroner's office or the, uh, Cortland Garage and stuff. In another building, but at least the equipment will be on cement in a facility owned by us besides that John Hickey's area.
Absolutely. Trump County Sheriff's, like Wilson, yes, we'd be able to, we'd have to look at plans and. Make sure that our equipment fit, building's big enough, cemented, you know, climate controlled. I think it'd be a good idea to check into that. I guess that I felt that the cost of the addition to the fire station was that sustainable and shouldn't, shouldn't bump forward that anyway. Yes.
Well, we have a Cortland garage there now that's not being utilized. Why can't they just go in and forget remodeling?
I, I had asked, I had asked Sheriff that. He said it's on dirt, but then I talked to engineers. They said it's on, it's on.
No, the whole, so engineer garage after itself is cement. I said, and they have an office out there and they have restroom out there and they need. Some renovation a little bit, but I think you'd be much better off.
So Danny, I was talking about a separate, I'm sorry, Commissioner Malloy, I was talking about the separate building where we, they have their construction. And they do work there to stay dirt floor. Uh, the other building I haven't been to to see what's there. But if we could use it, if it's big enough for us to put a wall up and have our stuff as restricted access, it would surely be able to that.
See, that would be great. We could put a wall up or do something in there. That is climate controlled. That's why they, that's why they use that garage. So that the trucks can be ready in the middle of winter. It takes them forever to fire them up.
Well, yeah, they're not gonna use it as much now because they have the Hubbard Brookfield out person's tie. And they just put a new roof on there also.
A million dollars on roof.
So. Okay, thank you.
And we're open to all suggestions as long as.
So what we need to do is, is get you the county engineer. Get you access to that building and, and that squad can look at it, see what you think.
Sure.
And I think David, we had talked to David. So the engineer. And that's, and that's close there too.
Again, that's actually a better facility where it's sitting now space wise, because you are a little cramped in, uh, Fire Department Bay right now with all the stuff.
Commissioners, the Engineers Department was allowing, it was a Portland. Yeah, there was a reason why that specific bay or area wasn't available. So I think it just takes.
So that's a garage.
Yeah, it's huge. There's multiple things, correct, yes. So I think it just takes, what it shows is they're willing to obviously burn with people to. Use that space. So I think it just takes a little bit of coordination. I think it's not.
Yeah, we need, we need to have some patience. But working towards it, just. Right, and, and I think that we're all in agreement that the ARP monies. If that works, the three hundred thousand that he has. The mail is three hundred, right? Well, yeah. Yeah. We'll absolutely delegate that to the move. And then if the sheriff can work with David on the, uh, the bit, the Cortland building and we can. Alter that for a minimal cost and it works for the sheriff, then we're accomplishing.
And, and that does buy us time too on the corner, because if he had the whole building with no E M A interference, he can keep doing what he's doing there. And have the inside and there's no worry about meetings, we can cancel business smell, security of getting the hazmat material out. Then it just, that's kind of the money to remodel the boat. He's already there and it's just coming up with the remodel, which. We can worry about that at a later time. At least we take care of one asset of it. Maybe the sheriff's department, uh, asset number two of it, and we're making progress. I think they'll be happy with that. We split, split up the, the issues, not making one big issue. That's what their fear was, was. John wasn't gonna move until we came up with three hundred eighty thousand dollars for a building for the sheriff's equipment, you know?
Well, that would be.
Granted, I never asked for that kind of building.
Correct, we just needed to.
It would serve our purposes, right?
And, and he, he was looking at a building that had plumbing for bathrooms, that had internet service, that had. Uh, climate control. And if we already have that in the engineer's garage, we already have an office you can utilize, a bathroom. Then we just need to secure banks.
And it may be fixed up. Team player, so we're looking, we're, we're definitely entertaining that idea. If it works, though. Sure. Do you wanna contact the county engineer? I can call him, sure. And, and let us know and maybe we can go too.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
This is the way it works. You gotta work. Communication. Yes.
If you don't mind, Beth Carmichael with Trump County Tourism. And when these groups are meeting, if they give me enough time, I can help them. Try and find a meeting space that isn't in those types of facilities. So. I'm working with the library right now on a meeting. So we can look at alternative spaces for these guys who have meetings and we're happy to help with that.
Jenny Pasha, Yuckstown Business Incubator, uh, Yuckstown Business Incubator, past dating over management of the Bright Energy Center. Uh, like Beth, uh, if you reach out to me. Fisher Malloy has my contact information. Uh, we'd be happy to make some space available there, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Hey, between the two, you know, if there's an issue, there, yeah. They can meet temporarily. Of course, we wanna. We wanna see this move through, but we appreciate those offers. Thank you. Okay, so we are, do we have any other business? Lisa? You have any business? Sheriff?
No.
Helen? Commissioners?
Oh, and I did, we did meet with, uh, C C A O this morning. November is the drop dead date, but they have to, we have to have an aggregate program. Moving by, because we have to send letters out, we have to get people to sign up, you know, agree to it like we did before. We did the first step of cutting loose the ties of the contract we were under. Um, C C A was asking that. Within the next two weeks, we give them approval, we'll start. Representing us to go be able to go out and get quotes. Until we allow them to get quotes, they can't. Before we were locked in, the only one that could do it was Buckeye. And now that they're a free agent, we just have to give permission for someone else to go get us quotes. Since it's seventy seven counties are in the program now. Um, and the board members, they've got commissioners from different counties, including Kaihoga and Nagashlin. Are on the board that are representing the quotes. They're gonna be going out and getting these at auction. But they said whatever quote they're gonna give us will be a fixed one, not a variable one, and it'll be, it'll be. Uh, lumped together with seventy six other counties. It'll be seventy seven of us going out to bid for that together. Which they said will drive the price down. They believe considerably from where we are.
Except for our buildings here.
Buildings, we already have them, but this will be for the whole aggregate for the county.
But we only have, yeah, we only are till March at three nine nine for gas. That's, that's where we are in that.
So we have the electric.
Correct. We can't be in the aggregate program. So we have, these are commercial buildings. So that's why. But we'll talk to them about that as well.
So what do they wanna get? The aggregate program or?
The aggregate program.
County.
They wanna do the aggregate.
Aggregate program for the county, the one we just touched on.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
The electric is, yeah.
Yeah, and.
Well, we only have that.
With their proposal, they'll give us a set price like everybody else.
They'll, they'll be able to get the, yes, they have to go to bid first, get permission first, and then they'll bid with the prices for all seventy seven counties. And they'll give us the number before we vote on approving them to be the thing we have.
Well, we have to sign up, have our documents.
Sign documents to bid?
Yes.
Okay, but not to.
Not to accept.
Right. Not to accept.
Right. But we have to hire them basically as our agent.
Yes.
That we are in the program. So when they go to bid, they're bidding on behalf of seventy seven counties and not, well, we might get them later. We might get this. They want a solid bid. Of here's the number of homes that we have.
But that doesn't commit us to going.
Have to go with that.
Does that commit us to going with them?
No.
So you have the authorization.
Then we have to sign with somebody else to get bid from other.
Bill Dance of Prosecutor's Office, I haven't, it's the, I haven't looked at the contractor, what they're proposing on this yet. I just think. You guys should be sure and I, I, I see there's a lot of confidence on this right now. That's fine, but. What I would be careful of is, you know, if their thing is to get you to sign the agreement to, to bid on your behalf to get that rate. It seems strange to me that then if you would back out, that, you know, if the rate was based on the aggregate of seventy seven counties, then. Ten of them can back out. It seems a strange thing that you can back out and still, you know, get that rate. You know, particularly before because C C A O was pretty adamant that you couldn't get a price quote until you joined officially your program. Uh, the other thing I would say, just as a practical matter, is they are correct that they have to send out these notices. And they have to enter the bids. They have to get all that kind of stuff done well before the actual aggregate program starts. Practically speaking, what you should also consider is that you are really screening out. The competition from any other aggregate program because my fear, I don't wanna say my fear, but practically speaking, what could happen is. You guys move forward with this, even if you decide you don't like the rate, even if you can opt out of that rate down the road. You may have pushed it so far down the track that you now are, there's no other company that could bid on it because they can't send out notices, they can't.
But that's the situation they have. And they said, nope, the other group locks people in and Asher Bill and Ford's been trying to get out of their contract for three years and they can't because of that same reason.
That's kinda what I'm saying.
They're locked in.
They're all.
What we're gonna tell you is they're all the same.
I can tell you guys, what happened to me directly, what happened with the electric program. Once we signed up with C C A O, then I got a barrage of, of notifications from several different locations. Stating that NOPEC was signing them automatically up. You had to opt out of it. It was unbelievable. I can't tell you how many opt outs I had to send. And C C O, uh, C C A O wasn't doing it for me. I had to do it.
It, it's just a complicated. This aggregate program. I just, I wish I kind of really.
So what do we have to do to get, to get quotes, bids from everybody?
That's why, why can't we just get them, didn't Buckeye and NOPEC go at it at one point? I was here at a meeting when they went at it. And NOPEC go at it at one point, I was here at a meeting when they went at it. And.
And Buckeye was supposed to get us a price without us signing up with him, he was supposed to.
That's what I thought.
We haven't had it yet, right?
Why can't we initiate them to get a price?
They, cuz they they said they can't lock in, cuz they they have to say how many people are representing the lock.
How are they gonna lock anyways when it's not due until, when is?
Well, cuz.
Or, and here's the other, the other, the other factor is, like, a a resident can opt out, if they don't like that price, they can start shopping on their own. I know so because I've done.
Just go to yours.
I've done, I've done.
And there are, I repeat, while the seventy seven counties that are under CCAO. Some are locked in for two more years, some are locked in for years, some still three years, so they they. Gotta go to bid and then cost average what they have, so it doesn't affect someone that's got a lower rate to bring their rates up. So it's, it is a complicated thing, but this is the process we have to do, they said if they don't have it by November first, they can't go to auction. They can't, they can't incorporate us into the master bids that they're doing.
But I like.
It to be a timing.
I agree with what Bill, you know, being a prosecutor's office.
Here's the thing with the aggregate, and and I, you know, I appreciate how much effort you guys have put into this, because I I think you really are trying to. See how low you can get that rate, but the bottom line is, you know. At some point, you have to, the aggregate program is an option. It's an option that you guys, you enter into these contracts with whatever entity it is that you choose that thinks is, that's gonna give the best service to the people in Trumbull County who are part of the aggregate. At the best price. And, you know, that is based. In different ways, it seems like Buckeye is able to tell, for the most part, if you were to do this today, here's what the rate would be. It, it seems like CCAO may do theirs a little bit differently through Palmer Energy, theirs is more, we send these things out and it takes us a while to get the official quote, so we can't really know what the price is right off the bat. NOPEC has their their thing, I'm sure a lot of these brokers have their own thing, but the bottom line is. You guys look at this, you make the best decision you can, where you think you're gonna get the best rate, the best service. But it's an option. If people aren't satisfied with the with the aggregate program, there is the ability to opt out, go to apples to apples. Uh you know, the website to compare what's better, what's not better. You know, that's a little more complicated than it seems in some time, in some ways, because there are some companies that have interduct rates, there are some that have a flat rate.
A fee.
With a fee then for the, you know, so you really do have to look at it, but the aggregate. The aggregate's an option, you know, it's not, you guys aren't really locking people into these rates, you guys aren't the ones setting the rates ultimately. You're doing the best you can to find the aggregate that's gonna offer the best rate and the best service for people. And, you know, sometimes it's, I think, let's put it this way, a majority of the time, it's gonna end up being. A good rate for people, sometimes there may be a better one out there, and people can switch, so, you know, I I. I think that, uh again, it's good that you guys are putting this much effort into it, it's a good thing that that you're paying so much attention. But ultimately. You know, you you do have to just kinda look and see, what do we think is the best, and if it's not best for a particular household, a particular person, then they they are. Able to go outside and do something else, my understanding is, generally speaking, the aggregate programs. Don't have, I say generally, because there could always be an exception. Generally, the opt out programs do not have an early termination and an early opt out penalty for people, so people could. You know, opt out, right, virtually any time. Without that, without any sort of penalty, without any sort of problem into a program that leaves better for them.
Yeah, we did this dance right before the new board took over, we had to. Sign up, that's what we went with Buckeye, and we only did. Instead of a three year plan, which is what he wanted. I demanded we needed a fourteen month plan so we could get to this point, and that's where we are now, it's fourteen months, it's up in March. But, we've gotta be. Ready to go in November to let people know there's a change. Last time we we came to table with this. NOPEC gave us a bid. Mister Bellish came and gave us a bid, we're just like a tenth of a point lower. And CCO wouldn't give us a bid, cuz we weren't part of the program. But then after we signed the thing, they said you're paying more than our seventy four, seventy five other counties were at the time. So, that's all we had to go by was that, and until we at least give them permission to shop around. They can't do anything for us.
And I just have to point something out, they only did the electric for us, they have not done, not anything with the gas, this is, this is fresh, this is where we're done with Bellish. On the gas program. Now we're starting fresh on gas, that was electric.
Right, but the electric expires in March also.
No, I think it's May.
It's fourteen months from when we did it, so.
But I wanna make it clear that we're not done with Bellish, we just.
No.
We just.
By no stretch of the imagination. You have not made a decision, period, you're not, it's really that simple.
Right, we just had to get out of that. Situation.
They chose not to go with the automatic renewal, that was something you can't re-invent.
Well, as it stands today, the only thing that everybody, the only thing that I can say is, you choose for however hard it is.
Then why would we get out of the automatic renewal if we weren't gonna shop around it, we need to shop around a few.
Right now, there is no gas, there it, there is, so I just wanna make this very clear. There is no plan for a gas upgrade by the RFP, you're not on the line with anybody, whether it be Bellish, CCAO. And or NOPEC, okay, so as of right now. What, what we do know, to be honest, is that there's no gas, so come November first, if this board has not made a decision, is all we're saying, okay? Come November first. Nobody can go out to bid on our half or gas aggregate, so if it should go past November first, alls I'm gonna tell you quantifiably is that we won't have a gas aggregate, and that's a choice too.
Gas is different from electric, gas is a lot lower, so gas is still around the three nine nine.
Sure, because it does go into effect April first, so. This, I'm excuse me, March first. So. You have to give the three months for the RFP for anybody, whether it be, you know, Buckeye, whether it be CCAO, whether it be NOPEC. Um. So, alls we're saying is, I I'm not gonna advocate for anybody that's not my role, my role is just to say. You want an aggregate program, it's nice. Down to the wire, yeah, we're the wire.
I wanna price from everybody.
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair not to.
And what, and what do we have to do to get that? Okay, whatever we have to do.
From, I don't know.
We have, the only way we're gonna get a price from CCAO is we have to enact this to let them go and get us a price.
Concur, and I agree, that we that we should make sure to be on a shadow of a doubt about if we mix as a tie.
Right, and that's why.
I agree, that's that's the best part of it.
That's why he needs to look at that.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And and we're all right with the other two to give us a price, are they aware of that?
What's that?
Now, they may tell you to say that. So.
I never heard that, Bellish never made us do that.
Well, but we were with him.
Did he?
So we had already signed that.
You already had the rights to do that, you wanna represent us.
With us.
So we didn't have.
Buy those metering, because he had access.
And then we, we just did the aggregate and we we saved the the buildings. It just ended up like it. We did the buildings with him first. With CCAO, and Bellish, we still had the electric for fourteen months, so we're gonna be flipping there also. Because that's only good till. May. So, the aggregate programs for the the public, that is what we're discussing right at the moment.
That's the first thing.
We threw our buildings on, we were able to do that, so luckily, utility wise, we are at the three nine nine mark at least by March.
So, I think at this point, have it. Prosecutor, look at that, and then after that, figure out. How to get everybody involved, so we don't leave anybody out. To at least give them an opportunity. And we could do that, we could schedule that, the same day, give forty five minutes to each. Entity if we want. Invite them in.
I I'm not sure. I don't dance across, I'm not even sure if you really.
Ten minutes?
Well, I I would say this, I mean, if you wanna bring them in for meetings, that's clearly up to the board. But the other option is, would there be any problem with just asking to submit their written proposals, you know? I I mean, it's not a competitive bidding situation, you know, because the county's not spending any money, county's not, but you could. Sort of do your own. Selection process just by kind of notifying, hey, like a proposal by such and such a date, I think the risk is for CCAO. Your proposal that's gonna come back is likely going to say. Our proposal is to sign this and and then we'll give you a rate, you know, which. Maybe that has its benefits too, I'm not making any judgment on that, but.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Like Commissioner said before, that's a hard call because you can't.
It is, but it represents seventy seven counties.
I know, Danny, that's like me saying. Hey, listen, I'm gonna sell you this car, I sell it to a hundred other people, and I'm gonna give you the best rate, and then it comes, and it's like, wait a second.
Yeah, but it's also like saying. This guy's got a hundred people who represents, we represent ten thousand, we wanna take you to an auction. We know we're gonna get you the better rate, but I can't tell you what it is yet till we have the auction.
So, just curious, I mean, we've been with their electric program, or no, I'm sorry, we've been with their program for the county buildings, right?
Yes.
So, where did that rate ultimately come in versus what we were quoted from the others?
A snitch lower, a smidgen.
So I mean, that gives you at least some evidence that that, that.
But it was very small. It was. But it was cool.
Okay.
But we also didn't. I just wanna.
So is that telling us the rates are probably all comparable?
You know what it comes down to? Make a choice on who you want, and if the customer doesn't like it. They could go apples to apples and and make and make their decision, but we're gonna take the hit initially, because. When you do the aggregate, everybody looks at it and goes, look at that, look at this rate is, well, who did that? Well, the commissioners. Are only offering you. That rate, but we're not telling you have to take it, it's a lock, if you like it, you like it, if you don't, then shop.
But again.
And I did it, I shopped.
Like, we've talked to these meetings before, the fact is, the utility rates have gone up, and that's not something that the commissioners chose to do.
You have no control.
For gas and electric, it's something that you are seeing now what a reflection of the market rate is.
Openestation way, so.
Sure, and we try to get that rate, you're trying to to look at these vendors to get a rate, and I don't even wanna say vendors, these are brokers, they're going out to the utility companies. And trying to find the best rate they can, you know, that's, that's all you can do, in fact, that rates have gone up. Substantially in the case of electric, you know, over the past few years. There's really, that's nothing, that's outside of your control, but you can still try and offer. Maybe if you do, you know, a two year program, three year program, the rates that people lock into now. It may look really good two or three years from now, the way that that old rate looked back then, maybe, you know, maybe it's not, that's the nature of market, but. Um, you know, you you guys are really doing the best you can by. Getting these quotes, getting this information, and making the choice, again, if it doesn't fit. Opt out.
We can also, for our own buildings, I mean, we could shop. We can. We don't have to have a broker. They all make money. I don't care. We do historically see a cost of goods, though. Well, so it's. Well, I was. I. Member. For synergy, so. A hundred percent.
Look at that. Who gets them, who gets them that contract?
Yeah, does anybody have that yet, I haven't seen.
I don't have anything, I mean.
You can email CCAO, model word, the agenda.
Okay.
On the agendas, you can. Start with that.
Somebody just wants to forward it to me.
I don't have it yet, but. I mean, I'm sure CCAO would be more than happy to provide it, so. They sent it to you.
I just wanna talk.
With the whole contract. I don't look, I don't, I don't think I got it, it's been a while, I don't look.
Okay. Um. Well, at least you send it to the clerk, and she can get it to everybody.
Yeah.
Alright.
I guess with that, brought that up.
We have a budget.
What is, what is our schedule you guys prefer for meetings? We had those meetings yesterday. And I I'd heard it wasn't on my schedule, even today's meeting. Um, I heard you you said yesterday, that's not on my schedule. How are we, you know, how do we make sure that all three commissioners are at events, that it's on the schedule when it's confirmed? So that one of us doesn't go into a meeting with it, without the other two, or.
First thing is, is. You had a suggestion, but I, you know, I don't know, you remember when we're scheduling meetings? Sometimes there's meetings scheduled we don't know about.
I think they should go through, you know, contact the chairman, and then he can let us know. Uh, I mean, the chairman should know first before anybody, I would think.
See, Dawn sends them out, the way it used to work, and we didn't know whether it was mandatory or whether it was optional, you know, so Dawn. I think she she's rectified that part of it, listen, this is a mandatory meeting, but then now. And I never knew that we had to do this, you have to RSVP. Those meetings, and it takes you to.
Well, it says on there, when you click on it, it says decline, maybe, or.
Right, but I don't remember doing that before, it would just show up on my.
Been doing it for a year and a half since we've been here, it's, that's Microsoft.
Show up on my schedule.
Office.
So, so we have to do that, you have, when it comes. You have to open it. And RSVP whether you're gonna attend, not, maybe.
You have some of the attachment that's on the email and Outlook, and it says on there, here's your invite, accept, maybe, or decline.
So. And I I've done that on others. But this one. That you said yesterday for some odd reason.
I was on there.
You were, but I could show you on mine, it wasn't on.
It came from Dawn to all three of us, I accepted. And then I brought it up last Wednesday.
I probably, we probably didn't.
I didn't accept it, cuz I wasn't gonna go, because I knew, I kinda figured what it was about. And I I've been there like a month and a half.
Did you decline?
No, I didn't do anything.
That's the problem.
I know, that, Commissioner, you see, that that's, that slapped to the police and fire chiefs out there to play the.
Yeah, but, you know, I I mean, I.
You didn't even give the courtesy to call and say, no, I'm not gonna do it either.
Hold it, I was there a month and a half ago, and I knew what the meeting was about, and I wasn't, I wasn't ready, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna make it, so. Don't side it again, okay, so anyway, um, you went, that's fine, okay? My position has been. From day one, we get the funds, we're gonna move, alright? And they should know that, I mean, John Hickey, I talked to him fifteen times about that, right, he knows that. So. We can move on.
Yep.
Alright, anyway. We know what that's all about.
So are we gonna start declining, accepting, something so? People don't show up for meetings?
Yes.
Without people there?
We don't want it into the system.
Are we gonna have a procedure on how we accept or not accept meetings?
I mean, I think that if. You get sent an invitation. You have great choices, if you really don't know. Then, you know, just start sending or whatever, you know what I mean, let somebody know, but if you're not.
Jesus. That would be.
It's not gonna be seven hours. It's a different job, you know.
Okay.
Judge Frederica's.
I don't, there's just one email I just, we talked to Judge Frederica. And I, I opened it, so that's something that you would have to RSVP, we have to accept it, decline it, or maybe. You know, um. Anyway, I'll talk to you about it, but we're over with. This is, we we're finished with our regular agenda items, so.
Commissioner, Jerry?
Well, did we wanna talk about Bristol? Or no, they sent a letter to us, I got an email from a trustee here asking if we discussed it.
Discuss what?
No, we haven't discussed it yet.
That's what he's asking.
I'd like to discuss it, yeah.
Yeah, let's discuss it real quick before we adjourn next, that is very, I I think it's very important, they reached out to me also. Very, there's a monument in Bristol Center. For the Civil War. It's the. Oldest Civil War monument in Ohio, and the second oldest Civil War monument in the country. And it's in some disrepair. They wanna restore it. Bring it, bring it up to its. Standard. Because it is, it is a monument that was put there, like it's the second oldest one. They need twelve thousand dollars, the historical society's trying to come up with funding. For twelve thousand dollars to do this, like, they talked to Commissioner Bernard a- already. And, uh, I, he asked me to call and find out the information from. The historical society, I talked to two trustees. One this morning, and, uh. the Historical Society. I talked to two trustees, one this morning, and uh uh, one a couple days ago, and then the one just emailed me down, asked if we had any questions, or are we gonna discuss it? Um, they're looking at twelve thousand dollars. I know, we had put in an ARPA thing for, didn't we put some in for Bristol Township for their center there, their.
There's a lot of stuff, I'll have to go back and.
Yeah, I think this might be the same type of situation as. As what we did with, with Hartford, and we did with uh Bloomfield, I think Bristol, we, we put monies toward their admin building and their, their park.
I think we did, yeah.
So it would be, it would be reallocating a little bit more monies to a program that we already talked about, I believe. But for twelve thousand dollars, I think this is a it's a pretty big deal to people in Bristol, it's a pretty big deal.
Give anybody any more money. I, I, at ARPA, I think that, that is done.
Now, what I was asking, did they receive ARPA?
If they already put money to the program, we can allocate more money to the same thing, just like we're talking about doing with Dick.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna be a little tricky, that's gonna be a little tricky in the, in the reporting part, because I've already done all that.
Because it's not the same project?
Well, no, it's just, it'll be the same project, but where am I taking the funds from? So I have to minus it off another project and put it on that one. This is gonna be a little tricky.
Well, Gary's already had a few projects, he didn't use it all in the sewer stuff.
He didn't?
They came in under a couple things, you said, there's the last few meetings, a few projects that came in under.
It's my, there's three sections of funds there, I mean, some of those, so I wanna do this.
Correct.
There's gonna be from the account and the if, for sure.
I reached out to Danny to, to see if we could use that, cuz I, I saw it on there. I mean, I think, I mean, I think if we can preserve that, I think that's well worth it, and um I don't have a problem with that. I, I think it's a, it's a great cause. We just need to make sure that we have the funds there. And I, I, I agree with you, Danny, I think we sold the whole thing for twelve thousand dollars, and uh for the restoration of the monument, I mean, I think there was twelve people that fought back in the Civil War, and names are on there. I, it's, it's, it's a pretty, it's a.
That, that's amazing.
Yeah, and, you know, it's right there at Route eighty-seven and, and forty-five, and I, I saw it on the news, and that's when I, I mean, it I was laying in bed, and I came up out of the bed, and said, whoa, wait, we gotta try to help this out, so.
I mean, we did cemeteries, we did other monument things, with, with the Historical Society.
Especially, it's, it's the oldest in the state, the second oldest in the United States.
We just couldn't do signs and whatnot. I'll look back at Bristol and see what the actual project was, because it could probably be put in there. I just have to make sure I take it from another project.
We did sidewalks or anything with that, it's that center.
We did the sidewalks.
I think it's, that could tie in, cuz it's a park. You know, it is their
Yeah.
their township.
And it's historical.
Correct.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll look into it.
So that's another, yeah, we're, we're looking at.
We're trying to do it, we can say.
We're gonna try to fund the whole thing for it.
Good.
Alright.
They'll be happy to hear that.
We did, we have something in that.
One o'clock, ten minutes.
Okay.
Is that thing ready?
Yeah.
We got ten minutes. We got a budget meeting in the coming.
Just keep the party rolling.
You might as well, do we have a budget?
I need to go get it.
What's there to adjourn to?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy and Slim. Ooh, Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
So I have to, I bet.
Yes.
Oh.